Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence Council meeting. Today is April 3rd, June 20th. Roco, please.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Levy.
Present.
Counsel LaPlante.
Present.
Counsel Abdou. Counsel Peano.
Present.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Present.
Counsel Depeña. Counsel Vice President Giovanni Rodriguez. And Counsel President Vasquez.
I would like to just say a few words. The Counsel President is not going to be available today and not going to be running the meeting. He doesn't feel good. Moment of silence, please. Please join him for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So can I get a motion to approve minutes from 3:20, 18, please? So moved.
Abstain.
Please, a second.
Aye.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Abstain.
Roco, please.
Counsel Reyes.
Abstain.
Counsel Levy.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Abdou, noted. Counsel Peano.
Yes.
Counsel Dela Cruz.
Yes, with call on 7:18.
Counsel Depeña. Noted. Counsel Rodriguez, Vice President Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Counsel Vasquez, marked. One, two, three, four, five. Motion passes.
Motion carries. Public participation. Just notice that we have two and a half minutes for everybody that want to speak. The two minutes, you're going to have a warning. So today we have Francis Clark.
No, it's Solak.
Solak. Yes, please. Please take the mic, please.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Francis Solak. I live on Broadway at 245 Broadway, apartment number seven. Lawrence High School had a great year in basketball. They went 22 and 3. They've got to be recognized by the Council. I know he did it already, but they need a trip or something for them. Ray Nunez did a great job. He went 22 and 3 this year. Last year, he went 16 and 7. So he went 39 and 10 in two years. Ray Nunez is a good coach. Maybe you can give him a raise. It's up to you if you want to. I don't want to tell you what to do because it's wrong. Lawrence Police need a raise. Patrolmen make $52,000 a year. Lowell make $87,000 a year. They go to Methuen, they make $95,000 a year. The mayor has a $15 million surplus. When are you going to do something for the police? Firemen need a raise, too. It's been seven years. When are you going to do something for them? Please, please, they need a raise. Bricks are at the courthouse across the street, ready for somebody to fall. That's a state problem, not a city problem, but people nearly trip over there. They should do something. Broadway needs a substation like they had 25 years ago. Tower Hill needs a new fire station manned because the people deserve it. They deserve the best. They deserve that. Human trafficking must stop. We must not put these women in front like they're doing. It must be increased. Drug dealing, it must be, not 10 years, 30 years. In Russia, they chop off their hands. We're America. We've got to be better that way. Prostitution must stop. Lawrence needs to be clean. It's dirty, filthy, all around. Put everything in the garbage can. City should buy the showcase cinema on this side. Parking, they park all over the place at Lawrence High School. You could have 30 events a year. You buy it on this side. City should buy. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. We have Frankie Caraballo.
That's another guy.
Please name an address for the record.
Yeah, Frankie Caraballo, 139 Saratoga Street.
Reason that I am here, I am being his translator. Reason I am here is to look at your new faces. Congratulations. Many months ago, I brought a petition before you. For the cameras of the City of Lawrence. I'd like to thank you because I know that that is taking place. And I'm asking you from the bottom of my heart, not for me. But for the young people. We need cameras. Help the police department. That will help deter crime. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Malik.
Good evening, honorable members. This is with the great gratitude and appreciation and pride to inform you that our Lawrence teachers.
Name and address for the record.
Homayon Malik, 53 Chester Street. Teachers' Union have their contract. We are grateful to Honorable Commissioner Rally and his hard work and caring. Grateful to Mayor Rivera for creating a teachers' union contract. Now we need to focus and work hard to get contract for our police officers and the union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Roy Vasque has done excellent job to protect our citizens. We need to support our senior officers' union. Mayor Rivera need to sign police officers' contract. Citizens are united through this petition in support of police officers getting contract. We invite all the citizens, sign this petition. Our DPW U work hard. We need to support their union. We are grateful to Honorable Commissioner Rally for rescuing Lawrence Public School and Honorable Chief Frank McLaughlin for hard work to getting teachers' union a contract. We need to be example of the city that appreciate and value the union, starting with our police officers' union, senior officers' union, our firefighters and DPW U workers. Remember your campaign promise, save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence. Only possible you as our elected official, support our police officers and the union, sign their contract. Let's move forward. Remember, sign the petition on behalf of our police department and the union. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Joey D'Amico. Name and address for the record, please.
Joey D'Amico, 11 Lorenzo Road. Just want to bring up a couple of points. One of them is, do you guys all understand what difference between low rent and affordable rent? Low rent means the landlord is now charging the lowest possible money without getting any reception money back from the government. Affordable housing, low affordable housing, is Section 8. They get 35. The landlord gets his all his money, but part of the money is subsidized by the government. So a person who makes $800 or $24,000, which is the mean of the city, will now, when they pay their rent, they're paying that at a 30 percent. They only have to pay 30 percent for their rent. Last week, or last month, you put in an incentive for the snow removal. I talk to landlords, guess what they're going to do? People with low rents are going to get their rents raised. Why? Because it's a safe haven. Because who's going to pay the ticket if there is a ticket? So the landlords that I've talking to are going to raise the people's rent, put it into like a escrow account, and if they do get a ticket, they get the money to pay for it. If not, the landlord makes extra few bucks. So I want you to make sure that you people understand the difference between low rent and high. Because I guarantee you, everybody on the Council makes twice as much money as the mean of the city. So that means when you're doing different issues with different prices going up of tickets, whatever, remember that. You're not hurting the rich. You're hurting the poor individual people. So I just wanted to bring that up, Mike. And again, everything is publicized and on the internet where you can look up housing and see what people have to pay and what they can use for deductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, Councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. First things first, now that the archaic, absurd, asinine winter parking ban is over, let's make a change to it now and make it more up to date as are the winter parking bans in other surrounding communities. Next, as a rule, I usually don't comment on agenda items until they are actually brought up before the Council, but in this case, I'm making an exception. Take a page out of your procedural playbook. I would like to talk about agenda items 129-18 through 133-18 as a block. First, regarding the search for the police chief. The acting chief is doing a good, no, an excellent job. Who cares how long it takes to find a permanent chief? I, along with other citizens, want results. Titles are secondary. The city council parking ordinance. What do you people want? Special privileges? We elected you to represent our interests, not your own. Next, ID badges for the council members. Maybe if some of you showed up at neighborhood meetings, the citizens would know who you are. As it is now, with the attendance records of some of you, GPS ankle bracelets might be appropriate for some ID badges. Last, the review of the police cameras usage and an ordinance to protect the civil rights and civil liberties of some with the use of these cameras makes me want to start asking questions like, whose side are you on, actually on? Or at the risk of being extremely sarcastic, are some of you card carrying members of the ACLU Junior Auxiliary? I bring these issues up because I know I'm not the only one in the city who doesn't like the smell of these items. I mention them just to let you know I will be fighting against the implementation of any of them. The proposed agenda items about police cameras rank right up the stupidity with the Lawrence Trust Act from two and a half years ago. I bring my infamous handcuffs and ask which one of yous want to place these on the police department. Remember this and remember it well. America is a country of law and order, not a country of no laws and lots of disorder. Lawrence, despite what some of you want to make it, is still part of America. In closing, I want to quote Woody Guthrie. This land is your land. This land is my land. This land was made for you and me. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. All those names are going to be part of the record. So now continuing with the agenda, we have the public hearing, item 91-18, the proposal of community health specialists. We have Martha Velez today here from the Senior Center. Martha? And this is, well, Mr. Clark, please.
Document 91-2018, notice here by giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input concerning proposed amendment to the advised ordinances by following new section to Section 2, 120-100, entitled Community Health Specialists of the Municipal Code Regarding the Council on Aging, to be inserted in proper order at Section 2, 120-100. Establishing Section A for a community health specialist for the aging as a non-union position to be appointed by the mayor, reporting directly to the executive director of the Lawrence Council on Aging. Section A also provides for the duties and responsibilities of the position. Section B establishes the qualifications. Section C establishes the salary as a grade two position at $35,000 to $45,000 under the Benet and Associates Position Compensation for Classification Structure of 2005. Community health specialists shall be entitled to all benefits of city employees regularly employed in the administrative service of the City of Lawrence. To the extent there are any other ordinances contrary, they will be repealed if the ordinance is approved. The summary was posted and published for informational purposes. A full and unabridged copy of the proposed ordinance was available for viewing, examining, and copying in the Lawrence City Clerk's office, 200 Common Street, between the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM, and was also posted on the city council website on the public hearing section of the city council website. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on Thursday, March 22nd.
So, public hearing is now open. There is anybody that would like to speak on this behalf?
Good evening. Martha Velez, 147 Bennington Street, Director of the Lawrence Council on Aging, 155 Haverhill Street. I come before you to respectfully request that you grant this ordinance. This position would work on the age friendly. We have been designated an age friendly community for the City of Lawrence and Tufts, through the Mayor's Health Task Force and partnership with Groundworks Lawrence, has received a pilot money to start this position and really gather data and then continue to, on the 29th of this month, 29th of last month, we filed a full petition to ask for more funding to continue to fund this position for three years. What this position will do is gather data from people like yourself, community members, and see what the resources are and really talk to people, have focus groups on what people feel is needed to make this community age friendly. And when we're doing anything with community development or thinking about roads and everything, police department, is really looking at how we can create a safe environment for people at age. As I said when I was here last month, we are all going to get old and we are all going to age, so we have to look at it starting now. And in 20 years, there'll be more elders in the United States than young people. Thank you.
There is anybody else that would like to speak on this behalf?
I have a question on.
No, no, now it's a public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, we can discuss age. So, public hearing is now closed. Counsel, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, there is a motion to approve. Properly second, discussion.
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. I have a question on the education experience of this person. It's asking for more than 10 items that this person need to have to be able to get this job.
10 items?
More than that. You need to have an associate degree, three years' experience, human services, being able to do assessment, data collections, focus group. I think it's a lot of work for one person per se.
That is what the job would entitle. When we interview, we actually will post and we interview. If someone has some of the qualifications but doesn't have others but shows process to be able to do it, then they would be taken into account.
Yes.
It really will be.
It is hard to get somebody who can do data assessment, be a social worker, be in the field, and being able to report bad, record keeping, being bilingual. You know, it's a lot of work.
I understand, but this person would be working with, we are partnering with UMass Lowell, and they would be working with the lead person that really takes care of processing the data. So if someone got hired and let's say their forte wasn't data, but they've had some kind of background of collecting some kind of data, then we would train them. I take great pride in looking at applications when they get applied, when we take applications at the Senior Center. I interview everybody. The qualifications are there, but if everybody applies, I interview everybody and give everybody the opportunity because some people I know don't read well in paper or they might not show everything, but then when you have conversation with them, they really haven't taken their accountability of what they've been doing for the past 10 or 15 years and really know how to put it into summary as to what they do.
Okay. Thank you, Felice.
Thank you.
Counsel LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Mr. You. What's the goal behind this? I mean, ultimately, this person gets on board. What does that mean? What's going to be the impact of our seniors? I mean, what's the end product going to be and how is this going to improve whatever the problems are that we're facing?
So, in many different ways, what we're looking to do, truth but unfortunate, many times the senior's unthought about when things are being talked about, whether it's public safety, whether it's building roads, whether it's housing, whether it's, you know, routes to school. We have safe routes to school, but we don't have safe routes to senior housings. We don't have benches when people sit. We're not looking at how healthy people are or not, what are the needs? Are they taking their medications? So we're trying to gather this data so that when we sit at a table, we really think about these things and there'll be a report so that community development can have it, the mayor can have it at the end of these two years and hopefully ongoing. It also helps the Senior Center when myself, sitting there looking for monies or ways to partner with different people, I look at these things. And really, this is about hearing from police chief. Like, I don't know right now how many elders call the police department. Why do they call the police department? What's the reason that the phone calls are answered or not answered? Are they just calling because they're anxious or is it because they have an emergency? So these kinds of things. Maybe we need to do education on that. Is it that the fire department is getting calls and, but nobody has a fire alarm in their house? I mean, so I'm going to hear from elders, I'm going to hear from professionals, I'm going to hear from community works. We're hoping that we're going to listen to PTOs in the schools departments and get in there and really listen to people because it's not just about the elderly, it's about people aging in place, right? So as we know, ACOs, which is the Affordable Healthcare, the goal is to keep people in their houses and keep them well. It's going to be less money for the insurance companies, less money for government if people that get sick are able to stay in their houses. How do we do that? By really learning our community and what is it that the needs are.
Thank you. So it seems very broad. And so what I'm hearing is that in two years, the mayor and other people are going to have a report like this. This is a report that's sent by this police department based on the crime analysis they done for the last year. So we're going to get a report, we decision makers, whoever's on the council at this time, is going to be getting some information that's going to deal across sector, a lot of different issues. So this essentially saying, this is how our elderly people feel about X, Y, and Z. And it's be a reference guide of some sort where we can go in there, we can talk about parks, sidewalks, police department, and this is what the end product is going to be, is some sort of research guide that's going to help us make decisions. Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
That's correct. And there is nine domains that we'll be looking at. Safety, transportation, housing, immigration, health, social activity places. So there's nine domains that the Tufts University and also AARP has put into place. And when we start this process with Tufts, and that's what we did with this pilot monies, is we're hoping that then we're going to be able to connect to some more monies from AARP to continue this work and maybe not just have one person, maybe be able to get some more monies to get somebody else to help along. Plus, the person that's going to be working on this grant is also going to be assisted by myself and plus one of my staff members who is very familiar with what goes on in the age community, and she'll assist because they'll be in the same office. So if, you're all welcome to come to the Senior Center, but the way that I run my team is that we're all cross-trained, so we all work with one another wherever the help or the need is, and we all use each other's assets and weaknesses for the benefit of making the city safer and better. I think that one of the things that we need to remember is that when I stand here before you, it's not just about the aging, but it's the people that are aging in place. So the people that are coming up to age, we also want to hear from those people. And a senior in 20 years is going to be very different than a senior that I have right today. 20 years from today, people are going to be very techie, you know, looking at different ways to be a senior than what people are today.
Counsel, is there any other questions? Since there is none, I call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Communication from the mayor, there is none. Appropriation orders, resolutions, there is none. Appropriations, item 127-18, appropriation transfer of $5,000 from the Election Professional Service to the City Clerk Counsel Adonis. $5,000 from the Election Professional Service, printing and mailing, $3,500 from the Election Operations Supplies to the election printing mailing. It was put together by our city clerk. This is going to go to the Budget and Finance Committee. Appropriations, Budget Items, 113-18. The Chairman from the Budget and Finance Committee.
The Budget and Finance Committee met and sent up this document. It's an appropriation transfer from free cash to a special account for police cameras for the sum of $150,000. This document is sent up without a recommendation and to order a public hearing.
I just seconded.
There is a.
Motion made to accept the report.
Second, to a second.
Motion to accept it as a committee report.
I'd like to make a motion to re-order a public hearing.
Second.
So let's vote on the committee report first and then we can order a public hearing. Motion to accept this item, 113-18, the appropriation transfer of $150,000. To accept that as a committee report. There is a second on that?
I seconded.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So now, there is a motion on the table to order a public hearing.
Second.
Second discussion. I have a few questions. Why do we have to order a public hearing on this island if it is a voluntary matters? If we haven't done that before, why the committee decides to do that? Oh, okay.
So if I may, there's no public hearing required for appropriation transfers?
Yes.
So, you know, if you want to pass it, you can pass it.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Though it's not required does not mean it does not need to occur. It was the prerogative of the Ways and Means or Budget and Finance Committee to order a public hearing in the best interest of the public. It was not required. We understood that.
All right, there is any other discussion on this matter to order a public hearing from voluntary matters? All right, so the desire of this council is to order a public hearing for this island. I would like to call the questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 114-18, which is the appropriation transfer from the free cash special account for problem with tree trimming, $500,000, the Chairman from the Budget and Finance.
Mr. President, if it's okay with you, I'd like to take document out of order. I'd like to take document number 112-18. It's also with the police department, so we can move the police department out of here. I'd like to take document 112-18 out of order, please.
Second.
There is a motion on the table to take item 112-18. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 112-18 is the request to pay prior fiscal year invoice to Mako, $5,227. The chief, the police chief is here today. This is, this is to accept that as a committee report, right?
No, this is, I'd like to make a motion. This is a committee report. The committee report is to send this up to the full council with favorable recommendation to pay this past year appropriation, past year payment. Prior fiscal year invoice, that's the word I'm looking for. Thank you. Thanks.
So, before we do that, let's call the question to take it out of the table matters. I mean, I'm sorry, out of order. So all those in favor to take it out of order, please say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Now, the Chairman of the Budget and Finance.
Budget and Finance Committee voted to send document 112-18 up with a favorable recommendation to pay a prior year fiscal invoice to Mako Company for $5,207.
to pay a prior year fiscal invoice to Mako Company for $5,207.05. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right. There is a motion on the table, properly seconded. Discussion. There is none. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right. Continue with the agenda. Item 11418, which is the appropriation transfer of the free cash to special account for problem with the tree trimming, $500,000 was put on the agenda by Mayor Rivera, the Budget and Finance Committee, the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee. You have the floor.
Budget Finance Committee met and sent with unanimous recommendation this document, 11418. It's an appropriation transfer from free cash to create a special account for a problem tree trimming, the sum is $500,000, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right. There is a motion on the table, properly seconded. Discussion.
Discussion. Just a real quick thing, Mr. President, Vice Chairman, is the following. Trees, the attention that we need are trees are pretty significant throughout the city. I can only speak for my district, but I've got the sense it's citywide, and we can put some, especially in light of what we saw during the past few storms, we've had three nor'easters this year, many trees have been uprooted, a lot of damage done to them, and I don't know about anybody else, Mr. Vice President, but I get a lot of phone calls regarding trees and looking for maintenance. There's a lot of misinformation about it as well, but tree maintenance is a huge issue in our city. So, I am supporting this half million dollars. I realize it's not going to be the end all or be all for all of our tree problems, but I think it's a good start. We'll be able to get a vendor to work toward being responsive and trying to trim and take care of those problems, city trees, not private trees, city trees. So, I hope that we can all support it. Thank you.
He was first.
Counselor Payano?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, I have a question for the director. I think that the council president was, for a few minutes, he was at our meetings, and I think he had, you know, a few questions that I think were, you know, should be asked here as well. And essentially, I think, you know, so we understand sort of the need that there is right now, that we're trying to get rid of a backlog. I'm wondering what will be put in place to ensure that another backlog does not get created?
Good evening, councilors. Carlos Hackas, Director of Public Works. I think that is a very difficult question to answer. I think the backlog just reflects the nature of the issue itself, in this case, meaning simply that the amount of trees and tree issues that we have throughout the city is above and beyond the internal capability that we have in the department. I believe the intent of this item, particularly the half a million dollars, is to, for lack of a better term, have a dent at the problem. I think the problem is above and beyond half a million dollars, if you want to tack a dollar value to it. On a very rough estimate, we have over 6,000 trees in this city, and for us, we have one crew to respond to every single tree in the city throughout preventative maintenance is impossible, for lack of a better term. You know, we have events that happen during the wintertime, events that happen during the summertime, event that happens on a storm event, and that tree crew is assigned to be able to respond to these events on a day-to-day basis. So, unfortunately, that leaves us to react to these events as they happen, which they happen quite often, as you've been able to see during the last winter season that we've had. So, the backlog of issues that have been happening, most of those have actually been deferred maintenance issues that have grown to a point that are above and beyond the capabilities of the department, and at this point are becoming a nuisance and a public safety issue. All of the issues that we have been able to address through these storm events and throughout the winter season are more of the emergency basis situation. The tree fell because of the storm, a branch fell on the street, we need to move it out of the way, and therefore, we have to have our crew go out there and mobilize and respond to that event. During the regular year, we do have some minor tree trimming that goes on throughout the year, either responding to complaints from the city, from used councilors or internal complaints that come in through the administration. So, our crew is kept very busy throughout the year, either responding to events or dealing with some minor preventative maintenance. But the fact of the matter is that just the size of, the amount of trees that we have and the size of the trees that we have is above and beyond the internal capabilities that we have. So, I don't think I can reasonably say that there will not be a backlog in the future, because we see that every day, and we know that more complaints are going to be coming along. Right now, the list that we developed was essentially one of our streets and parks of us, was also a tree warding, was that we spent some time last year just driving around the city and identifying the biggest issues that he found, based on complaints that came in through the residents or through the city councilors, or just being able to see some things that we saw on the street. So, that backlog was developed based on that list. But there's a lot more, as I mentioned. We may have over 6,000 trees in the city, but we still need to get to inspect and determine what the situation is at. So, depending on what happens, if we can get a handle on this pot of money that we have and handle all those problem tree areas, we'll be able to make a dent on those areas. But there's still also another trees that are grown that we're going to have to pay attention to. So, unfortunately, this will be a recurring problem. We'll try to deal with it as best as we can internally in the department with the resources that we have on the operating budget, and also with the resources that we have in terms of manpower and equipment. But the fact of the matter is that it's going to be above and beyond at some point in time, and we'll probably have to have a similar item for a city council to deal with this problem in the future again.
Director Hackas, you're saying that this would only be a dent in the backlog? So, how, I think this one was for, you know, potentially 200 sort of orders or...
Work orders, yes.
Work orders? So, how big is the backlog, then? Is it high? It sounds like it's higher than 200.
It switches on a day-to-day basis on tree-related items, to be more specific. So, we can, to give you a fair example, right now, we're still dealing with a lot of the storm damages that happened on the storm that happened about a month ago. We had over, just in that instance alone, over 200 work orders developed for a span of three days because of tree trimming, trees that came down, and a lot of different events. That wasn't even referring to the backlog of just preventative maintenance issues that we have to deal with. And our crews have been dealing, just focusing that for the past, at this point, four to five weeks. So, once we get a handle on those complaints and try to clean up the storm damage that we've been doing, then we'll be moving up to more of the occasional complaints of tree trimming and whatnot. When I make the comment about making a dent here, as I believe that the tree warder explained during the committee hearing, is that you can't really put a tag with a dollar value on a tree, because some trees, you may spend $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 to be able to address, some may be much more than that because of the size of the tree. Some of these trees, you have to close out a whole street and get a crane to remove them out of the way, because it's simply impossible to be able to do it with the resources that we have. So, it's very difficult to be able to say, you know, we're going to be able to address X amount, because it's all going to be depending on what type of tree it is, where it is, and how are you going to handle that.
Thank you.
Counselor Reyes?
Thank you, Counselor Vice Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Haskett, to be here. Councilors, I want to encourage you to support this item. In this past storm, I have like, and he can second what I'm going to say, more than 10 resident calling almost every day. And one of them, it was that a tree go into the house. The insurance company didn't want to pay because that tree is the city who has to take care of that issue. As a matter of fact, today, that person called, and I spoke to him and say, you know, just give me some time, just to see how we, as a city, we can help you with this situation, because it's serious. I don't know if you ever had the opportunity to talk to your constituents, but it's almost every week. I don't even think that we should delay this, because it's a really great need that we have now. This is not something that we can make it up. Whoever wants to come, and I can show you 10, 10 in my district, that I had go with Commissioner Haskett, and me and myself, I mean, and him, we had gone, and this is something that we really need to pay in attention. So, it's one way or the other, that's what I'm going to encourage yous to support these items, so that way, we can, like he say, at least alleviate the problem. Thank you.
Counselor Andela Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Chair. According to Groundwork Lawrence, we have a lot of, we have more than 600 trees in the community that are sick. They are sick, and they cannot be saved anymore. I had to cut my trees. I have trees for more than 14 years in my house, and we had the need to cut it, because it was, it has been sick. Then, thinking about the winds and thinking about the bad weather, everywhere you go, trees are falling apart, are falling down. And it's more than a need to help out in the community, because some people, they have their trees on the sidewalk, and they belong to the cities, but some people, they had it like at the entrance of the house, where the city cannot help. But, at the same time, if the trees fall down on the street, then the DPW has been helping out to take them away, because we had that situation on Summit, Summit Street, and the owner of the house couldn't pay to do the cleaning that it was needed at the time. And then I would say that I will support this, and we need that money as soon as possible, because it's no way to save those trees anymore. They dead, they dead. To tell you the truth, it's hard, because I had that shadow in the back of my house. The DPW couldn't help me out, and, but a lot of people are going through the same problem that the trees is not. It's right there in the middle of the sidewalk and the entrance of the house. It's not going to be any way to save them. But the good thing is that Groundwork Lawrence is planting more than 260 trees during this summertime. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Abdur?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will cover ground that my colleagues have. I share their support and enthusiasm for this article. I will use this moment to make a comment and make a request. The comment is that you and your team at the DPW have been doing excellent work, Director Hackas. We have had the fall storm, which most people have forgotten about, and we subsequently had the numerous nor'easters, and I know, like Counsel Reyes commented about all the calls she's gotten, you know the calls, you know the emails and texts you've gotten from me, and there'll be another one in the morning waiting for you. This is obviously an older city, we have older trees. The one thing that it also does is it's causing us accessibility issues with sidewalks. Something that the director was here last summer talking to us about was sidewalks. The cement sidewalks are all the roots of these trees that are being brought down by storms are also making our sidewalks inaccessible to those of us that are less mobile. So, there's double cost here, the trees that are coming down as well as the sidewalks. So, with all of the competing financial concerns that we have here in the city, obviously, trees don't come to the forefront, but in this particular case, this would have my support, because they do become a public safety issue and an accessibility issue, which is a necessity that they be taken care of. And the one thing I would ask, and it's an open-ended question to the director, it does not need to be answered, but is make sure when you're working with, I guess it's a comment, not a question, but when you're working with Groundworks Lawrence or these multiple nonprofits, that we are planting the right trees. And I know Groundwork Lawrence is very conscientious, and they do the right thing, but that we're planting trees that won't grow to the scale of the ones that the DPWs are moving now and won't cause future sidewalks to heave like they are. So, in closing, great work. Please make sure your teams know that we appreciate it, and our citizens that we represent appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Counselors, there is any other questions?
I have a question.
Counselor Levy?
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. President, for, I have one question. I know that this is a safety issue that we are having in the city of Lawrence, and I know, and this is many trees that are falling down right now, and everywhere I had, I don't know how many I've been having around the city, people asking me to remove it in different places, but how did you come out with the $500,000?
It was based on the historical value, or, lack of a better term, historical spending patterns that we've had. We looked at how much we spent in the past years, both in preventative issues and also the emergency response that we have to, and the number of storms, and we looked at the impact that we have with that number. And then we came up with half a million dollars. Essentially, we feel that that amount is sufficient to cover at least a good amount of the backlog that we have in order to be able to address a lot of those outstanding complaints that we have throughout the city. So, that's how we came up with that number.
Are we thinking to hire any company to help? What's along with...
It's a combination, really. It all depends on, like I mentioned to Counsel Payano, it all depends on where the tree is located, the size of the tree. Some trees, we are able to do in-house, some are, we cannot. Again, it all comes down to the location of where the tree is, and also, the biggest factor is also the size of the tree. Some of these trees that we're taking now, believe it or not, are over 10 feet in diameter. So, in that case, we have to close down streets, get a crane out, so it becomes a very involved process at that point, and that's what drives up a lot of the cost for that particular situation.
Thank you.
All right. I have a few questions. Director Hackas, are we going to take care of the trees, or are we going to take care of the stump as well?
Excuse me?
We're going to take care of the trees as well as the stump?
Yes. There will be, so in locations where, as Counsel Abdur was mentioning, that has become an accessibility issue with the tree, we'll be removing the tree, the stump, and we also do be doing sidewalk repairs once we are also completed with the tree.
So, the $500 is going to be allocated for those three things?
Yes.
And it's going to be contractor combined with in-house?
If we can do in-house work, we will do that with our current resources and our budget. Whenever we need to supplement that based on the location of the tree, as mentioned before, then we will contract that piece out.
What about the waste of those trees? The waste of those trees produced? Perhaps when we cut a tree, what are you planning on doing with that?
With the trees themselves?
Yes. When we have a tree that we cut, it's a waste produced by that tree. What are you planning on doing with that?
So, if the tree is cut down by a contractor, under the contract, they own the remains of the tree, whether the chipping, if it's a larger tree and it needs a log truck, that needs to be hauled out of the city and is responsible to the contractor to dispose of it properly. If it is a tree that is taken in-house, then that is something that we manage internally through some sites that we have around the city to be able to dispose of the wood chips, the logs, and in some locations, the stumps.
And those $500,000 also part of it is going to be to take care of those sites that we have throughout the city?
So, yeah. So, obviously, because if the council does approve the $500,000, there will be disposal costs that will be associated with that. It's not simply just taking the tree away, cutting the tree out, and, you know, repairing the area. We also have to deal with a lot of the disposal costs, which, you know, we do have to pay to dispose of those trees. So, part of that will also be to pay for the disposal costs of the trees and those stumps and the logs also that we have to dispose of.
All right. Counselors, there is any other questions? All right. I call the questions. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you so much. Now, the committee reports, we have the ordinance committee is none, the Budget and Finance Committee, we have item 11218, the request to pay the prior fiscal year invoice. We already have that item. The Housing Committee, item 12618, Lawrence Public School, K.A. enrollment projections. Counsel Madam Vice Chair from the Housing Committee, item 12618.
Mr. Chair, we are taking the item 11218, I'm sorry, the item 2618 for the Lawrence Public School K.A. enrollment project and plans to address the capacity issues.
So, we have somebody from the school department tonight.
Here with the trees? Big tree. Trees? Tree? I have no idea. The last thing we talked about was trees. Oh?
Committee report. There is a motion to accept this item as a committee report.
Which item?
2618.
There is a motion on the table to accept this item as a committee report.
Second.
All right. There is a motion on the table, properly seconded. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have somebody from the school department here tonight to talk about this item. Please take the stage. Just name my address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mary Lou Bergeron, Superintendent of Lawrence Public Schools. I was asked to come forward, I guess.
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate that you're here, and thank you for your time to report on this item.
Sure.
Thank you.
First, we're going to say, as a school department, we are not opposed to public housing. We understand the need for housing in our community, and particularly affordable housing, given the population of families that we know are doubling up and enrolled in high-capacity space at this point. We are a little concerned about the fact that most of the housing is coming in one general area over the next two years. So most of the housing capacity is going to be along the Canal Street pathway and up into the Arlington Street and mid-city area. We anticipate that there'll be about 1,100 units available by the end of 2019. That impacts the same zone of schools, because we have neighborhood schools. So it impacts the Leonard, Oliver, Leahy, Up Academy, Oliver, Arlington, and Taubox, which is where we are already overcrowded. And we know that we are taking in new students on a daily basis, so even though not all units will be having youth or children in them, we know that just when the Duck Mill opened, they have 73 units, we've taken in 36 new students out of that one complex. So we understand the need, but we also understand we have two projects in place for the Oliver and the Leahy, but those will not come to fruition until 2021 and 2023, based on the path that we have to take under the Mass School Building Association construction projects. So we know, once we are ready to start construction on the Oliver School, we need capacity to be able to house all the students who are currently housed there somewhere else while they're doing the construction. We will need to do the same thing two years out when they do the Leahy and need to do the construction for the Leahy. So we're just concerned about the capacity of the district to keep taking in new students without overcrowding classrooms that are already hitting 29 and 30 students in a classroom, which is not ideal for learning, particularly with the children who have challenges. So we have done what we can internally with what we have in terms of seating and classroom capacity. We've done away with things like specialized classrooms for art, for science labs, and those teachers, what we call, traveling on the cot, and doing the best they can to make students getting the work that they need. But it becomes very difficult to keep taking over spaces that we know our children should have access to and be able to have full science labs or full computer labs and not have the mobile cot that goes from class to class. So we're not against the housing, but we want you to consider as you're making decisions about housing, the impact it does have on enrollment. Our enrollment has gone in the last 20 years from just under 12,000 to 14,400 as of January 1 of this year. So we've seen a huge growth over the last decade or so, and we know that we have more students coming. It's not like we think our enrollment's going to go down. So we just want you to be cautious as you're making your decisions about housing stock and where they're going to be placed.
Counselors, there's any question? Counselor Poyano?
So not a question, just a statement. I think this is a very important document for all of you to look over. I'm grateful, Dr. Bergeron, that you were able to come from Lawrence Public Schools and give us this presentation. I think one of the, we're seeing that the city is growing, we're seeing that we're building, you know, more housing units. And one of the things that we sometimes don't take into account is the pressure that it puts on our public services, especially within our schools. As you can see from this document, there are several schools that we're pushing, you know, close to 30 students per classroom. So I think that that's huge. You know, I don't know, even the last time you guys were able to, you know, to go into one of our schools, but teaching to 20 students is difficult. Imagine adding nine more. And, you know, I don't know what the, exactly the solution is as far as how to ensure that when these units are being approved, this is taken into account. But I do know that part of it is for us to be informed and educated about it, so we can become better advocates and, you know, also on the other end, you know, push for some of these other schools to be, for us to start thinking about expanding these schools. So thank you, Dr. Bergeron, for coming in and taking this time.
Counselor Abdur?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to join my colleague in his comments and encourage the city, particularly the planners, as we set forward these housing that we get going now and plan for the future. You know, with the pipeline to a new school or renovated school or just purchasing a property, it's years in the making, and we are seemingly not planning for the future. I do not.
Thank you. My apologies, did not have my microphone on. My hope is that the city planners begin today, coming before this body, and hopefully they've already been working with the mayor, to plan for the future, because these projects take years, Mr. President. They, the various approval processes, and that's why, reaching back to a vote that this council took two weeks ago, whenever we have the opportunity to secure properties that are in key locations, sometimes not having a fully baked plan isn't a bad thing. I'm referencing the Lowell Street property, because you don't have the opportunity very often downtown to buy such tracts of land. And, you know, my thoughts, when we talk about these two schools that are queued up to be renovated, and I'm sure Superintendent Bergeron will have the answers at that time, but where's the swing space? You know, we're going to need swing space, and, you know, often we go to St. Anne's and we rent St. Anne's and we find locations. But hopefully, as policymakers, we can work with our planners and encourage them that with all of these housing plans that are coming before them, that every time there's a plan before them, that they ask, what are we doing about, as Counsel Poyano said, the services? Not just the schools, but the fire, the police, there's an impact on all of these services. And so when we do these things, we can't do them in a vacuum. So in closing, I appreciate Counsel Poyano's comments and certainly this report. So thank you.
Counselor Delacruz?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bergeron, for coming. Counselor Poyano, I think this is a great idea to think about the future. We still have some mills that are still in the community that we have to start thinking about how we're going to keep them for schools, because as it is now, we have to start thinking about capacity for more kids coming in. I think by five years, you're going to have more than 30 kids in a classroom, because it's happening now at this moment. And especially those areas around the hospital across the river on 1 Canal Street, we have to start thinking about more schools around those places. I hope that people who are planning for the city, that they have been thinking about two or three more schools to be built for the city of Lawrence in the next five years, I hope.
Counselor Blunt?
Thank you, and it's heartening for me to hear all these comments, because it's good they were talking like this tonight, just to reemphasize where we are. But I want, I've been talking about this for a while now, but I just want to change my tone a little bit and change the optics. Is what can we do now is where I'm going to look at this. I mean, I'm not talking about building of new schools. I'm talking about what can we do as a city council to deal with this issue besides the creation of more schools? How are we dealing with more, creating more and more and more units in the city? Unfortunately, what we see in the pipeline has already been approved, and let me add, it's not been approved by the city council. We have various boards and commissions, and I say this periodically, because they kind of sometimes go under the radar screen, but they're really important. Zoning Board, Planning Board, various boards in our city, specifically those two, that deal with these kinds of things. And if they don't hear from the population, from the residents, if they don't hear, oftentimes they hear from the developers. And the developers make very persuasive arguments as to why we should make these mill buildings into housing units. Very persuasive, because on the other side, there's really few people there to speak out against it. And so then we get hit. We come to this meeting tonight, and we look at 1,119 new units being created within a year, year and a half or so. That's a lot of space, and if we put those spaces in there, we got potentially a lot of kids, and we got to talk about, and the impacts that I heard this evening, the impacts of public safety, city services, space for schools, these are million-dollar questions, not thousand-dollar questions, million-dollar questions. So what do we do at this point? And it's hard, because we can't put the genie back in the bottle. I think we're going to be getting 1,119 units. That's going to happen unless the economy sinks in the next little bit, but it's probably going to happen. What we have to do, what we do have control of are the ones, the twos, the threes. We have proposals before us constantly, take this unit and make it a two or two or a three, can we sell this to make this unit over here and this over here? We have the ability to control the smaller portions of it. That's one thing that we have control over. The second thing we have control over is when these people are appointed and sent down, these people who are on these boards and commissions, and I am thankful for them for being a part of this, but the question should be asked of them, what is your opinion about taking these bigger buildings and using them for housing and housing structures? What is your feeling in general about that? These are the kinds of questions we should be asking the nominees that come down here, so we have an idea. And at the very least, if they don't have an idea, make sure they are aware of what we feel about that, because once we confirm them, they get to make the calls essentially on these various things. So I just think it's important for us to realize where we stand right now. It's a little late now for some of these, but what can we do in the future? And we're going to have chances. I know in the housing committee, we've got structures, right? We've got things that are about to be sent up to the pipeline to the full council that looking at, some of them are once a 39-unit apartment complex, another one has one or two or three kind of smaller kind of plots of land, looking at stuff, but we have to look at those things. And I hope that we can remember tonight and this discussion as we think about, do we want to increase the number of housing units in the city, and what are the impacts? Thank you.
There's any question? I have a few questions. Mr. President, can you take the stump, please? So we're talking about enrollment. What's the average amount of students that we have per classroom right now in the city of Lawrence, in average?
At the lower grades, 25, 26. At the third through eighth grade, 27 to 30. And at the high school, it depends on the course, there could be anywhere from 20 to 30 students per class.
20 to 30 at the high school?
At the high school.
And you mentioned on your statement that we are a district, a community district.
We're neighborhood schools.
Neighborhood schools. So can you explain a little bit of what that means to the people down there? Probably they don't know.
A neighborhood school means that the enrollment for that school is done by an attendance zone around the school area. So instead of being able to select, I want to go to the school on Tower Hill and I live on Prospect Hill, the schools are set up so that they're neighborhood schools and the children that live in those neighborhoods attend the school that they live by.
And what's the radio between that school? Like, what's the distance between the school?
Most of our students only are, you know, four or five blocks away from their school. That's why most of our students are walkers, and we're not busing students everywhere across the city, except for those who live across the river.
But the students are required to walk up to 1.5 miles, right?
They can walk up to 1.5 miles.
Before they get in transportation?
Unless we're crossing the river because of safety.
Okay.
But even, no matter where we are, all of our buildings are at capacity. It's not that we can say, oh, students that are living in these new housing can go to the south side of the city because they're congested and crowded in those buildings also.
So currently, the city of Lawrence have two new projects that are coming up, which is the Lerner and the Leahy, right?
There are two projects. The first one is the Oliver Partnership.
Okay.
So that one is going to be, it's in the pipeline now, they've just passed the last, they're going into feasibility study, but they're telling us it will probably be 2021 by the time that school would be ready to open. And the Leahy is about two years behind that.
At the housing committee, you present us with a report. Do you have that report available in a PDF format?
I didn't provide the report. I think Mr. Poyano had the report.
So a question to the Vice Chair, the Vice President, which report? The one, so there's one that was provided by the school department, and that's this one, the two-page report, and there's another one that was copied, it's also here on our list.
Can we have both of those reports available to the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, and that way they know how the student population is going? And that way, we probably address part of the concern that Mr. Counsel Blunt had?
Sure.
That way, we have kind of like an official report to them. Thank you so much. Thank you for providing with us the report. Counselors, there is any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Motion to withdraw.
There's a motion to withdraw.
Second.
All right. There is a motion on the table, properly said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Continuing with the report, we have personal committee reports, there is none, public safety committee report, there is none, committee of the hall report, there is none, withdrawals. We have item 280AB, 2010, Kingdom and Salem Street Group, it was put on the agenda by Counselor Maltonado. Can I get a motion to withdraw?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 28512, Plant Towns Declaration as a surplus, it was put together by Counsel Bernard, she's here with us tonight. There is a motion, can I get a motion to withdraw?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All business. Item 718, the removal of snow from Lawrence and sidewalk, modification of ordinance section 12040, it was put together by Counselor Vice President, Joana Rodriguez, and Counselor Poyano. Motion to reconsider, vote from 32018. Counselor Delacruz?
Yes. Thank you. Can I say?
Then you got to put a motion first.
Let me put a motion on 718.
There is a motion to reconsider your vote from 32018, right?
Yes.
All right, there is a motion to reconsider her vote.
Pointed parliamentary, is the person making the motion on the prevailing side?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, there is a motion on the table?
Second.
There is a motion on the table, properly said, properly second, there is any discussion?
Yes, can I?
Sure. Counselor Delacruz?
Thank you, Vice Chair. My vote, I needed to reconsider, because for many reasons. I was waiting for the roll call, and it never happened, and I wasn't able to express my feeling about it. As an educator, I do care about the safety of the children in the community, but at the same time, I want this council to think about the ordinance that we put in place. For example, the snow on the sidewalk, if it's coming from the sky, is not a problem. The problem is when the snow is being pushed to the sidewalk to people, and it's happening three, four times a day, and it's happening during the night, when you are sleeping, when you clean your driveway, and when you wake up in the morning, the snow is there again. Then, as an educator, I believe that children should be walking on the sidewalk, but it's a responsibility of the DPW to clean the sidewalk. 20 years ago, they were cleaning the sidewalk with the little truck that they have. I think that we need money to buy equipment that we need to be able to remove the snow. The snow that doesn't belong to anybody, and that is the snow that is in the middle of the street. I do have a private company cleaning my lot, but it's the chain of the city when they put the snow on my sidewalk. And therefore, I am against this motion to ticket people for the job, the bad job that the city is doing on putting the snow back on the sidewalk of the people. Then I do care about kids, and I do care about children walking safely around their community, but at the same time, this is a problem that needed to be solved as the community, that needed to find a solution as the community. The solution should be DPW finding ways, like they find the way to solve the problem with the trees that are dying. We need to find ways on how, what we're going to do with the snow. It is not that I like it or I don't like it. I would like to clean the snow that is coming from the sky, but I do not want to clean the snow that is being pushed to my sidewalk. And I have about 10 different calls from people with pictures, with videos, that they're going through the same problem as I am. Then instead of ticketing people, I think as the community, we have to find solutions that are to benefit the whole community before we punish the community by And I have about ten different calls from people with pictures, with videos, that they're going through the same problem as I am. Then instead of ticketing people, I think as a community, we have to find solutions that are to benefit the whole community before we punish the community by not providing the services that they need as taxpayers. Then, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity, but my vote is no.
All right. And there is any other question? All right, there is a motion to reconsider the vote, and it's properly second.
Council President, I just have a question. Can, first time on the council, so I just need a better understanding of, so there's a vote. What, what are we voting for exactly? What happens then?
If I may, Council President. The first vote for the council's edification is to reconsider. If you are in favor of reconsidering, it's not reconsidering your vote of March twentieth. It's to permit the counselor moving to reconsider a vote. The subsequent vote would be to affirm your vote or to change your vote.
Okay.
All right. So the first vote is to reconsider the, the vote. So all those in favor to reconsider the vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
On the vote, excuse me.
Point of parliamentary decree, Mr. President or Vice President? Just so we're all clear on this vote. A vote and affirmative allows us for another vote, should there be another motion to, for this particular measure. At this point, if we vote no, there won't be another motion to allow the counselor to have an option to make that motion. A motion yes is a motion to allow another vote on this matter. A vote no stops it completely. Is that clear, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, that's correct. Roll call, please.
Council of Depeña, no, to Councilor De La Cruz.
I need an explanation, as Mr. La Plant just said. Is the vote to reconsider?
Vote no mean no. No reconsideration.
This is not what he explained.
Exactly. I, I believe, Mr., Mr. Vice President, I believe what is, what the question before us, I believe, is a question to allow the individual on the prevailing side, if this vote passes, to then make a motion. A motion to vote in favor or vote against the next one. This right here allows the debate continue for that next motion to take place. A yes vote goes, allows this motion to be discussed, one way or the other. A no vote means we cut off and we stick with last, our last meeting's vote.
Then I say yes?
Councilor Payano?
I, I, I say no.
Councilor Abdu?
Yes.
Council La Plant?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council, Vice President and Chair?
I say no. Motion pass?
I'm trying to think if it takes a six.
It's the second part of this question.
The motion does pass, it's a five vote. The only votes that I know take a six vote, unless I'm corrected, Council Vice, yeah, one more vice, excuse me, Council La Plant.
My understanding, I'm looking for the rules itself, is that the person on the prevailing side, the night of the vote, can go ahead without, without a, without a, what's the word, the, um, changing the rules, can go ahead and do it. But because it's, because it's not the same night, we need to have a vote to allow the vote to go forward. What's the word I'm looking for? The, um...
All right.
Vote for recon, uh, okay. The vote, I think it's rule number twenty. When a vote is passed, it shall be in order for any member voting with the prevailing side to move for the reconsideration thereof at the same meeting in which the vote was taken. But when a motion for reconsider is decided, it shall not be reconsidered. We are now asking to go ahead and suspend rule number twenty, essentially. The rule, if we're suspending the rules, I think that's where the question is. If we're suspending the rules, I think we need six. This is the different meeting than the previous motion.
My understanding, again, just as a point of parliamentary proceedings, this council is pretty much as a practice, taking up the fact that, or taking up a practice of allowing reconsideration through the next meeting, rather than the same meeting, although the rule does state exactly that. And I understand, then there would be a motion to suspend if you want to move that.
It has not been in my experience on the council that we would always have to have a, um, an exception for this rule to go ahead, to go forward. It's always been that same meeting. I am not aware that...
I defer to you. I certainly defer to you as a counselor and, and just as a clerk. Again, I don't argue with you, certainly your point is, is, would supersede.
So the other question is, the question, the question of, the question then before the chair, the question before the chair is that there was a motion right now to go ahead, essentially, to, to, um...
The motion will be to suspend the rules to allow her to, to reconsider her vote. And, and the fact, we have five yeses, two no's, so the motion carries, we, we...
I would argue that the previous, I would argue that the previous is not in order because we need to suspend the rules to allow that vote to go forward. Before we can actually have consideration of that, we have to suspend the rules for that. Suspend rule twenty.
Correct. I, I believe what the Council President Protem is asking is five votes or six votes necessary. I believe five votes are.
To suspend rule twenty?
No, 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 five votes on the prior, what was just roll called. Six votes will be required absolutely to suspend the rules, as the council knows.
I will, I will, I will make this suggestion or this thought, is that before we can engage in a discussion, we need to suspend the rules, right? And so the first, the first, there's a motion, it should be a motion to suspend the rules so we can have a motion to reconsider. Reconsider is not in order because we're on a different day.
Can we get, can, can we ask for a motion to suspend rule twenty?
Second.
All those in favor to suspend rule twenty for reconsidering the her vote, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, that is, can I get a motion to reconsider vote, the her vote on item seven eighteen, the removal of snow on loins and sidewalks? Modifications of ordinance twelve oh four, four, zero forty. Can I get a motion to...
So move. Second.
All those in favor for reconsidering?
What is, what is the vote? I'm sorry, point of parliamentary, what is the motion?
Motion on reconsidering now, we, we, to approve.
Now it's to reconsider? Not to, not, there's no motion?
Yeah, to reconsider.
Okay, just to reconsider.
Just to reconsider. Yeah, motion to reconsider, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now we need a motion to, a, a, approve or affirm the vote being taken on item seven eighteen on March twenty-two thousand and eighteen. And...
So move.
We have a motion on the table?
Motion on the table?
Yes, by Councilor Reyes.
Second.
And it's been properly second.
Point of parliamentary, what is the motion?
Motion to affirm the vote on item... On seven eighteen. So, which means that... Form a change, yes.
Okay, it's a little confusing.
Mr. Vice President, I think she wants to remove her...
My yes, I want to remove my yes.
Now you, now what we're doing, we, you are voting, now what we're doing, we are voting on the actual item, what you're looking for exactly.
Okay, it's second.
That's exactly what we are at this point, right now.
So is the motion, so, so I'm clear, there's a motion disapprove. There's a motion disapprove or a motion to approve. Affirm the last meeting, the last meeting, the last, of that, that motion.
All right.
Yes.
And as I understand it, the counselor from District A will be, will be voting against that this evening?
All right.
Okay.
She just expressed that on her opinion.
Mr. President, one last question.
Sure.
Through you to the clerk. Mr. Clerk, a yes vote is a vote for affirmation, which upholds the vote taken on March twentieth. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
Correct.
That's correct. That was the next step, we were going to clarify that. A vote yes means that you confirm with the vote being taken on March twenty-two thousand and eighteen. A vote no means that you are against that ordinance.
I have a question.
No, Councilor Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if my colleagues, that means you do not have to vote. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clerk or Mr. President, you do not have to vote the way you did on March twentieth. This is the opportunity to have a second bite at the apple. You vote, vote for affirmation, does not necessarily mean you affirm your own vote. You affirm the vote of the council on that night, which was...
You will be standing in your own shoes, affirming your vote if you vote yes. If you decide to change your vote at this juncture, you would be voting no. It has no reflection on the vote itself, other than your own vote as individual counselors. There was a motion before the board presently to reconsider. That motion was allowed. Now you're at the opportunity to reconsider your own individual vote. If you so decide to change, that's your opportunity to do so now.
So voting yes means yes, that I agree with the ordinance that we present on March twenty-two thousand and eighteen. Voting no means that you're against it. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Roll call, please.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council La Plant? I'm sorry, Levy, I apologize. Council Levy?
Yes.
Ayes. Council La Plant?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Payano?
Yes.
Council De La Cruz? Record it. Council Depeña? Council Vice President and Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries. So now we continue with the agenda. Councillors, table matters, there is, there is any items that you would like to discuss tonight from the table matters? No, let's move on to new business. Item one fifteen, one fifteen eighteen, the Iglesia de Dios Pentecostal requests the barrios park for preachers. The wood is God, corner of Newberry and Garden Street, on July second, July twenty-third, August third, September thirteenth, September twenty-fourth, Cronin Park on July ninth, July thirty, and August, August twenty, and September tenth. Reviviendo, Reviviendo Park on July sixteen, July six, August sixth, August twenty-seventh, September seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, from five P M. to seven P M. And that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one sixteen eighteen, handicap parking on H. S. Togas Street, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one seventeen eighteen, no parking on Davinci Child Center, main entrance, from Monday through Friday. That's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one eighteen eighteen, city clerk fee adjustment, that's going to go to... To the Ordinance Committee. Item one nineteen eighteen, Metuon Gospel Hall requests the use of the campaign comment for a vacation Bible school.
Yeah, budget, that's what I say.
Yes, it's, I see. Item eighteen eighteen is going to go to the Budget and Finance Committee. So item nineteen eighteen, Metuon Gospel Hall requests the use of the campaign comment for the vacation school, vacation Bible schools on August thirteen through August seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one twenty eighteen, the plywood fiber network requests a placed underground conduit on Canal Street and Apple Street, Appleton Street, and that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one twenty, one twenty-one eighteen, the recycling program ordinance is going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One twenty-two eighteen, Orchard Street delete from the winter parking ordinance, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one twenty-three eighteen, no parking in front of one seventy, one seventy S. Togas Street, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One twenty, item one twenty-four fifteen, receding parking only, Orchard Street, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One twenty-five eighteen, update, updating housing code, that's going to go to the Housing Committee. Oh, I know, it's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Because it's related to codes, yeah, yes. One twenty-six eighteen is the offices planning on development. The Community Development Block grants, that's going to go to Budget and Finance Committee. Item one twenty eighteen, roomy houses in Lawrence, that's going to go to the, to the Housing Committee. And report to the chief. Item one twenty-nine eighteen, the report on chief of police search, that's going to go to the, to the...
Police.
Personal.
Public safety.
Well, it's related to personal, so we're going to have to go, we're going to have to have it on the, on the Personal Committee. Yes. One thirty-eighteen, the review of the police cameras, rules and regulations of civilian, of civilians cameras, that's going to go to the Public Safety Committee. One thirty-one eighteen, the city council parking ordinance, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One thirty-two, one thirty-two eighteen, identification badges for city councils, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One thirty-three eighteen, an ordinance to promote transparency and protect civil rights and civil liberties with respect to civilians cameras or civilian technologies, that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. Item one thirty-four eighteen, Lawrence School Department approved for street closings, street, closing, street closings for the Lawrence Learn Block Party, and that's going to go to the Ordinance Committee. One thirty-five eighteen, appointment disability commissions for Joan Fachiato, that's going to go to the Personal Committee. That's, Councillors, we received that item on May twenty-ninth, so we have thirty days to take action on those. The thirty-day threshold is going to be on April the twenty-eighth. Item one thirty-six eighteen, appointment of Boulevard Cemetery Board Commission, Jamel Severino. We also received that item on the twenty, May twenty-ninth and, March, yes. March twenty-ninth, and the thirty-day threshold is on, on April twenty-eighth. So we have to take actions on those items before that time. Item one thirty-seven eighteen, new body machine purchase and approved process, and that's going to go to the Budget and Finance Committee. Item one thirty-eight eighteen is the appointment of the zoning board of appeal, Roberto Fernandez, and that's going to go to the Personal Committee. We also received that item on the twenty-ninth, and April twenty, April twenty-eighth is going to be the thirty-day threshold. Just to make that as a note. Councillors? There is any other que, item they would like to speak? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, we just have to schedule the meeting for the...
Oh, yes, by the way, we need to schedule the, the subcommittee meetings. Personal?
Wednesday, the eleventh, at six-thirty P M., subject to availability.
Wednesday, the eleventh? All right. Budget and Finance?
Same evening, just after the Personnel, so roughly seven-thirty.
The, Wednesday, the eleventh? What do you, what day you say? Eleven?
The eleventh.
Okay, Wednesday, the eleventh. Ordinance?
Next Thursday, April the twelfth, at seven o'clock.
First, Housing Committee?
Mr. Vice Chair, I think you're the, you're the Chair of the Housing Committee.
I know. I know, but I mean, I wasn't looking at my schedule.
When is the safety week?
April tenth.
The ninth. So the ninth, April ninth, Monday? And we have Public Safety. Do we have any item for the Public Safety?
April tenth, seven P M.
April tenth? On the ninth, you won't be available? Do we have court for housing?
So I'm available.
Housing.
Well, the housing, yeah.
Do you, would you like to propose another day, Councilor La Plant? Yeah, but I mean, we would like to have everybody there.
Are we having Public Safety on the tenth?
Yes.
Yes. So the tenth, Council Levy?
So we got Public Safety at seven P M., so unless...
How long is it going to take?
How long is Public Safety?
It's going to only one, one, one item.
I mean, I, I, I don't know, all right?
So let's schedule for the same day, and one after the other one, it goes, it's two items on both meetings.
So for the folks in Public Safety, so I, I guess it depends on housing. If housing is going to be an hour, right, then we can do Public Safety afterwards. But if housing might take longer than an hour, then it's just too, you know, too many meetings in one day.
But if housing might take longer than an hour, then it's just too, you know, too many meetings in one day.
No, I don't think it's going to take more than, no, no. It's only one item.
And is the item, the SXG project is going to be, is one of those items?
Yeah, but for that, that specific item, we already have all the information.
Okay.
So, I don't think it's going to be a longstanding discussion on that.
So, would the public safety committee be fine, meeting at eight PM instead?
On the tenth?
April tenth is going to be from seven on the housing committee, and then the tenth as well at eight PM.
But you said that the housing is going to be on the ninth?
No.
They are changing the date. Oh, you think, you changed it.
Eight PM?
So, housing the tenth at seven PM, and right after, public safety, same day. All right, personnel, Wednesday, the eleventh, budget and finance, the eleventh, one right after the other one. Ordinance is going to be the twelfth, and housing and safety, April tenth. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you so much.
Thank you.